...for a personnel matter, if there were no votes or decisions made. Questions back? Okay. Now, as far as the personnel items themselves, we've not voted on this. Is it all a yes on the personnel items as presented?
Yes.
All right. All right. Okay, comments and concerns? Anybody on the board have any thoughts?
We're on what you're in.
Yeah. Okay. I asked Mr. Mickit to place the first item on there, the athletic field LCHS. We've talked about it for a while. We don't have to sign and talk about it anymore. Should we gotta bring this up? No, seriously, we are reaching the point now, and I know Mr. Wilson has talked to me about it before, end of December, and before we know it, it's gonna be springtime. So, the way this process, which is everybody knows, we've gone through before, we bid things out, it takes a while to get the specs prepared, then you have to advertise them, and then go through that whole process, and Mr. Gosney will be actively involved in all that. So, I just wanted to, and we did just talk about this, because it seems, Ms. Mickit, we've talked about whether or not we're gonna need the services of an architect to develop the specs this time out. I think what we would like to see is maybe sometime in February, have a bid open. That would be kinda like our goal, maybe in the latter part of February or something, have a bid open, and that way, if we did have a successful bid, or they come March, and that's a time where they can hopefully begin to do the work and all. Now, as you all know, funding has always been an issue on this whole project, and it continues to be. We had talked before about what alternatives we could maybe take to achieve what we wanna do as far as getting the field leveled and at the proper level and crowned, that would be the first step, and then, you know, from that point on, we've talked about getting it seeded, and we've talked about whether it'd be seeded through hydroseeding or seed by the, possibly with our people, maintenance people, whatever, then we talked about adding the drainage and all those kinda things. So, what I was, wanted to propose to you is, if we put out a general bid, that would just be for the leveling of the field and the crowning of the field, that would just be the basic, that'd be the basic bid. That would be, you know, the fundamental thing, you'd have to have that. And then, we can begin to add, have alternates beyond that. So, if we were fortunate enough to be able to get the field to the proper level and crowned within our means, then, if we had sufficient funds remaining, then we could look at the alternates. And what I was thinking was, alternate number one could be to seed the middle field. Now, with alternates, you don't, you can accept the big, major bid and not accept the alternates unless you want to. So, the first alternate would be, and I'm just hypothetical, hydroseeding of the field, and that would be showing in the specs how we'd want that done. And then, maybe a second alternate could be the drainage for the field. Once again, these specs for both, all these things are already done, it would just be, they'd just have to be, I guess, kinda separated or something. So, that's the part I'm sure of. And so, we can do it that way, that if we were able to have enough money to do the field leveling and crowning, and if we had enough money to have it seeded, that'd be great too, by, you know, an outside contractor. And then, possibly have the drainage. We have all this information available, and if we were able to do it within our $200,000, that'd be great, we could do it. If not, we might have to strike an alternate, and we could pick either one for that matter. We might say, well, we can afford to do this drainage, and we'll just seed it ourselves. Or, we can, you know, seed it, and then we'll work, or figure how we wanna do the drainage later, once we've got the specs done. Because we talked at one time about even affording our own maintenance people the opportunity to do some of those things on the weekends, and pay them additional funds to do it out of our financial cost of our money, to do it that way. Of course, there would be some equipment, things involved that maybe we don't have, so it gets a little bit more complicated. But, those are just my thoughts, I'll just see what you all thought. We talked about it a little bit there, anything different? Anybody see anything that we need to add or alter that, other than just asking Mr. Mickit to, I guess, if, what you all, you and Greg, we have to get together, can, are the specs something we have to do, or are we gonna have to get the services of our architecture permanent? And if so, we're gonna have to pay it again.
Well, that's a good question. I don't probably need a few more specs we've done.
They're there, right?
Yeah, so I don't see where we need an architect.
That's what, I don't know either. That's what I mean, they're there, can you all?
We have got specs on.
Yeah, we have the specs, all the specs that we have in blueprints and all that, that they've done before.
Yeah, and we call it for a grass field or a turf field, either one.
We'll go, we gotta go over the specs and look at them.
Yeah.
So, you have to see if you can isolate the different parts of it, so we would be clear to a bid or in the advertising part, right?
Right. But if I get in touch with ZMM, and there's no charge, right? Then we will go ahead and use our architect. Like I pursued that first, I mean, if there's no charge at all.
Mr. Mickit, you're the administrator.
Okay. Because I wanna make that phone call, just to...
Rowdy still on there?
He probably ran off the road on that one.
Well, we probably need to talk to Mr. Miller and see what...
He's listening.
...
That's right. We need to talk to Mr. Miller and see what part he thinks the vocational places out there could do for us. I mean, they might be able to sort.
Right. Right, that's what, well, that's why I think if you cleared these things, if you separate the information, things that we want in there, you know, the basic, then alternates, then that would give us the option of accepting all the seeded, or, like you say, maybe having those people doing the just those playings classes out there. We could always decide that based upon what we, our opinion. And the same thing with the drainage. You know, is that something that within our means we wanna do, or is it something that we might wanna, you know, utilize our own people doing?
I wish we could get everything done so we could seed, seed it by mid-March.
That's what I wanted.
Contrary to what, I guess, most people think of April as being the month of showers and a lot of rain, it's not in this part of West Virginia. Matter of fact, usually about the third week in April, you have a very dry spell. Trust me, I know. If we could get it seeded by mid-March, I know that's really precedent, I mean, we'd be much better off as far as field for grass.
Well, that's why we've got to keep helping them two and a half months or something out to get the process started, first being the specs and making decisions, and you can separate them, how are we, and we have the ability to put out outside of the belt, the belt and the specs that we put out there.
What would you propose, maybe we have a work safe in the first, sometime early in January, and Mr. Gosney and Mr. Miller, and see what they feel we can do?
Well, I was just thinking, between Jeff and Greg and Mr. Miller, they can get together and see what they think, and then just report back to us. And then, if we had any input, we could do it. I mean, I'm sure if they were meeting, they wouldn't mind, just might sit down and be, I was supposed to think of, of a superintendent, if he used his staff, and if he wanted to get some outside help, you can talk to him. Whatever Jeff or Phil missed coming, going on that event. And then, he can give us an update on it, kind of what we stand for. The idea of trying to meet the schedule, like, I heard talking.
Well, I think, pretty much what you said in February, when you said the February end of the bid opening, it's about February, mid-February, late February, and you will know at that point, what money we're gonna have to pay out as far as crowning the field and getting the field ready. And that point will fall back in, to where Mr. Wilson said, by April, we'll know by then what we're at.
See, I think you've got, when you have that bid open, you have to have those alternates in there.
Right.
Because we can then either accept them or not accept them.
Right. At that point, after we do the bidding, then we'll know at that point what money is with Gosney, what we can handle.
Exactly. That's what, we have it in sometime in February, you know, a bid opening, then we'll, at that point, we'll, you know, it's possible that we could, all, three of those things I just mentioned could be done within our money. I mean, I'm a optimistic person sometimes. Or maybe we can't, but if not, then we could look at other alternatives, like what Fred mentioned, actually, or whoever else we can be, if that matters.
It sounds like we need to start, then, before late February, then start.
We need to open for then.
Yeah.
That's what I was...
That's why we need to talk about now, for, just we get to, you know, get this staff and anybody else, and he doesn't necessarily, you know, to get the specs, specs have to be developed in such a way, and that's why, I don't know if there are other things there that you all think we should, and I just, through those two alternatives, I got others that we talked about all the time. We wanted, we know we have to get the field to the proper level, we gotta get it crowned. And then, the alternative, you know, seeding obviously has to be done at some point, along with drainage. I mean, part of it says, you know, you wanna, you'd like to have your drainage, now, before you go to seed, or after you're out there chopping up what you've been working on. But there are other things there too, that always be considered, you know, one of our , is when, once we put up the old boats and...
Fans.
We didn't, we didn't know it.
We had a few extras in there.
We were doing all kinds of things, we didn't even know what we were doing. So, I don't know, that's another thing, whether you all pondered, whether you think we'd wanna have anything other than those things, but, your...
Clear as mud. I'll get, I'll get Mr. Gosney to devise a plan, and I will make my phone call.
Okay. I'm with them, we're talking this about, we got new...
Yeah, before I jump into that, which since we're on the topic of the high school over there, I spoke to Leslie Tyree a couple days ago, and she's still in the process of working with the Parkland Highways officials on our issue with the ramps and the stairs over there. So, she indicated to me, she wanted me to let you know, that she will be at one of the board meetings in January to update you on kinda where things are right now. She really didn't give me much, you know, detail of what was going on, but...
Did you say she's met with...
She has, okay, yes. So, we'll get her on an upcoming board meeting in January for her to share with you what she's been able to find out at her meetings.
Do you have anything else to say?
I was gonna mention, we talked about finances, and we're always cognizant of what's going on around us, you know, and there is these rumors out there that we may see another cut imposed after the first year, so everyone's kinda mindful of what's going on there. I had Mr. Pritchard run new enrollment numbers for me this week, and since the second month report was submitted in the first of October, we've lost 20 students. So, that trend continues. You know, it looks like over the next few months, that's something else we're gonna have to keep a close eye on as we move toward personnel season. I know I've talked to some principals today, yesterday, who, you know, who indicated that they feel like they're at the lead, what they're hearing is that they may lose some students over Christmas break. And that seems to be widespread, it's just throughout the county, so...
This was after the second month report?
Yes, it's been just two months ago.
Well, do you know, for the, did it move out of county, or are they going to homeschool?
We've lost, we, there's been a few more students go to homeschool. I think our number now is around 138 homeschools, so that number does continue to increase. And evidently, a lot of people are leaving this area, and everyone's out for jobs, going to Carolina's and Texas, that's what we hear, where the jobs are, so. Well, it's, it's just something that we need to continue to monitor.
I talked to a fellow on the farm the other day, I'm really aware of this or not, there's a big coal mining operation taking place, I think, he said it was in South Carolina. He's from this area, and he's gone down there, apparently along...
Gold, gold, not cold, gold. I also wanted to mention that the OEP A visit is ongoing, we had four schools visited today, all on the side of the hills, and it was Lincoln County High School, Hamlin, Duke, all in Midway. Mr. Miller and I have spoken to the principals, it appears that the visits today went well. It appeared here at the way issues out there. Last week, our visit here to central office was, well, I would say, quite successful. It was a great visit. So, we've got all the schools over in the Guyan River tomorrow, we visit, it'll finish up our, our visit, and, and on January the fifth, Director of OEP A will be here to report out, be a draft report, with our principals, our central office staff, and she invited the board president and vice president to be part of the session. So, I would venture to say that our report will be made public and be official at the January state board meeting. And I've talked about the dates, and I forgot to get, it's sometime in mid-January, it should be official. So, anyway, we're anticipating, we're...
Mr. Perry, I agree with you. They were very polite.
Okay.
Is it, I just wanted to think, if we, just to remind you that our recent meeting, our regional meeting is this week, it's Thursday at 10 o'clock, the regional council may be here, so, or anybody who'd like to come to the meeting. Probably have something to eat after, or Mr. Powell.
Yes, sir.
That meeting will be this Thursday.
Okay, a couple weeks ago, we received an open bid for garden service, this would be for FY 18, start July 1, 17 or around the June 30 of 18. Mr. Gosney accepted the bids, opened the bids, and I have copies of the two bids. We received one from Republic Services, and we said, received a bid from Mountain State Waste. Let me give you a copy of two of those bids. Mr. Gosney may also have the documentation, and he was gonna share with you as well.
Am I allowed to see them?
Yeah.
Favorite topic of mine, trash.
You might get a bulletproof for that.
It's Republic, some of the use Mountain State Waste.
Just to clarify a little bit on the bids, what you're looking at, if you look at, Republic done an annual service from year to year, of the 42,000, eight sixty-four, of the Mountain State Waste, done a ten-month with a two-month, two-month reduced service for $60,320.
And have, when they broke that, did that change any of your requirements, and the number of pickups they were on, maybe?
Yes. Whenever they do the ten-month, well, we, I've bid it out like year to year, because we no longer have summer months, from the time school starts and we make up days, and we come back, we have dumpster, pile and out there, where they weren't being emptied because of that ten-month deal where they only empty them. You see our states on, I don't know if you have a copy of the fresh service, how we bid it out, twice per week, three times per week behind school, some of them are once per week in Midway, we're doing dumpsters.
But I mean, we comparing apples to apples here, you know, they broke it up in the summer.
We're actually comparing, no, we're actually comparing more service with Republic and less service with Mountain State Waste.
More service with Republic.
Republic has given us more service, emptied the dumpster more often, more service for $17,436 left.
In your specs, did you, has Mountain State, what they submitted, they met your basic specs, but Republic has exceeded them?
Mountain State Waste, I didn't really understand their bid, we didn't ask for a two-month summer month, looks like they may have bid something previously, that all the, in the specs you can see, do you have the spec sheet, the fresh service?
They don't, they do not have a spec sheet.
Okay, let me show you.
Always shows what's on Republic's here, it shows the number of pickups at each school, now whether that's year-round or just for the school term. If that coincides, what you have, I don't really know. I guess both of them show the times they're gonna pick them up, we don't know what's required.
No, they don't. We do.
Is it the second page, Greg? Is it the one that says trash service at the top?
On the second page, that's fresh service, this is why I was focusing in the paper, bid in the, Austin Gazette and the Lincoln Journal.
I have Greg come, voted as a bond.
Rowdy can't hear you back. He just wanted to be up here where he could hear you. So, this is what we asked, this is what we bid, and this is what we received.
This is what we did out, the bid, throughout the year, the number of times per week that we requested that things to be emptied, and that's what Republic had bid on exactly, as we posted, the Mountain State Waste bid on, doing a two-month reduced service.
Okay, when you say reduced service, is that...
That being said, what they were saying in a two-month, I'm assuming what they were saying in two-month service, is they're not gonna empty them twice per week, it may be only once per week.
But in your specs, did you permit that?
Specs that did say, how many times per week do we want them emptied here?
That was for 12 months.
Yes, yes. So, are you saying that Mountain State did not comply with the specs in the summer?
No, did not, did not comply with what we wanted.
In the summertime, right?
Summertime, no.
And even though they did not comply...
There was still $17,434 more than everyone else. So, that's what I reckon, that the Republic deal was $17,436 less, plus a full-year service at our rate we asked for. Twice a week, three times a week for that entire year.
So, really what Mountain State submitted, he didn't meet our specs?
No.
On Republic, is that include bringing in the dumpsters?
Yes, that includes, if you read the first part, the way it was posted, that we could provide dumpsters listed below to each public location on or before July 1st, 2017.
Also, there are calls in there that they do not meet our satisfaction, we can break the contract then, or you say?
When we, we'll put that call in there, whoever we decide to go with.
Oh, okay.
That's what I would recommend, on that, to sign the contract, just like, what we did with the someone.
But that wasn't stated in our, or advertisement?
No, it was not. This is the advertisement I hear. Everything is advertised, and how it's advertised on here. We have the right to reject all bids, if that's what we choose to do.
But based on what Mr. Curry said there, if the board were to accept this, it would stay in there with the contingent, if service wasn't satisfactory, it could be...
Yeah. All parties would cease to agree to it, so. I mean, that would be the part we would, we would find, if we wanted to get a contract to this, yeah.
Yes, we would, we would, drag a contract, yes.
And he would have that stipulation in there?
We can add that, and then, if that was...
This was the only contract I found, if you were going over on your documents, that when Dana done it, this was the only thing that was, as far as the contract before, that's in your paper, but...
It was in ours?
That's all the last, towards the last two pages. It was all the information I found before we did it, so, that was what we went by, for $61,000, and that was an eighteen-month contract there, so.
Have we had any complaints with our service?
Current service?
Yes.
That I know of, no. And I don't know if we had, but previously, we had any complaints in the previous?
There were issues with Republic, we had as part of the rationale for getting the garden service out in the first place.
Okay. And here you go. I think that's why theirs is the lesser amount, if it was accepted, and one such stipulation, that happened.
Right, absolutely, I was, I would thought, this is a bid, and as far as the second thing, if they accept the bid, if we accept them, and then, based on what we're gonna tell them in the contract, where they can say, we don't want to sign the contract.
Is that a good question, Curry?
Yeah, I'm just a little leery that if we accept, I know that's a lot of money, you know, but if we accept it, and then we get back into the same old mess that we were in the board with them, are we gonna be able to take this one up?
I think that's where we have to put some legal information in the contract.
I think what you're saying with the other company, be willing to come in, bear, yeah.
I'm sure that, you know, if you done that, I'm sure it wouldn't be the same price. Any company that would have to come in something like that, would be probably better, you know, they'd have to lower, expense a price for that. If they're coming in, taking over someone else, they don't have to bid on anything.
The other thing there, once again, is this summer issue, is that they, Mountain State, what they've done doesn't meet the specs in the summer?
No, not for what we did.
Right.
And basically, what I found coming into this in July, say at Ranger and different places, Hamlin, when you're doing work in the summer, or if you have people in there working, and then the school starts earlier, or your summer school, like at the high school, the dumpster was just overflowing, the calls were bad.
And that's why you put it in there to have them emptied in the summer?
Yeah, we've done a year-to-year thing now, so, schedule as we set it up.
Just curious why they didn't do that.
You know, it was posted, and I even emailed both vendors, what we posted in the paper, both the papers, so.
They could've just thought, you know, that there probably wasn't a need for class...
Well, but they required it in his, I mean, his specs, and here's what we are wanting. It's not like they had an option. They, they should meet, but his specification's shut.
Curry, just, excuse me, I don't understand that.
No, I'm just saying, we listened to the weak foot.
This paragraph, about the fourth paragraph down, starting with recently, we learned, am I to assume they are, they will reduce the current pricing of 1.5%, or it's reflected in this bid?
I think you're saying, for the next contract year, I don't know if we're talking about this year or the following year.
I'm thinking this would be the next contract year.
If it's been on for this contract year, so, I don't know, there would have to be some clarification.
That 1.5 doesn't make much, doesn't make any difference. It's not clear, if anybody can give me a...
Or does that say that since this has happened, we took that into account in the moment of, like?
That's what I'm saying, is that what you're saying? It hasn't appeared to be what...
I thought.
As if they are going to.
Well, I took it to mean that they took that into consideration, but. If they did, they didn't consider enough.
I know, one point five is one.
Okay. You guys have anything else, Mr. Gosney? Mr. Gosney, you have anything to add or anything else that we need to think about or consider or whatever? And this is not effective until July first?
No, it's, we, we have trash service all the way until, uh, the third of thirty.
And there's not any requirement that we act on this in effect?
It's nothing that I see, but I, I feel like that we need to make a decision so that whoever's going to get this, they'll have the dumpsters and everything, so we can, I'm sure.
A lot of folks are on a good thirty days anyway, but.
But we. Anything else? Rowdy, you have any questions on this or comments?
Besides, I mean, comments are, I share a careful concern that service will be for it as it was before. But, you know, after Greg, we'll stay on top of those issues. The contracts with them when drafted need to include a provision that we can terminate the contract before service, which is bad fact, we serve it with a thirty-day notice, giving them a reason why to ensure. The principals at the individual school are going to have to keep Greg posted on the quality of service. Greg will need, we make any complaint to Republic in writing, either via email or via letter, so that we have documentation of it. You know, given, I, I, I mean, I don't think we have an option. If the bid doesn't meet the specifications that we left, then it isn't a valid bid and it's not one that we can consider from a legal perspective. That's my take on it. And it's seventy thousand dollars and the financial situation we have at this point, I don't know that, that requiring A1, grade A, gardening service is something we can financially justify in the light of spending seventy thousand dollars additional for it. Um, so, kind of my comment, Scott.
Okay, that, you kind of summarized, I think, what the whole thing for was all there pretty well. Okay, thank you, Greg, I appreciate it. I just think, if you could think through all this at some point, I guess within thirty days. Would the contract be acceptable?
Well, I think that would be our next step. I'm sure that Republic, if, if they would be available to, uh, this clause in here about terminating the contract with a thirty-day notice. I think we need to make sure that that's going to check out with the manager, whoever this gentleman is, that we can include that in the contract and maybe be okay.
I think there's a consensus among the board that needs to be.
So, that's, that is their first day.
Based on past history, we should have.
I think what Mr. Baker said too, the principals keep us, keep input into services more. And anytime I get any notice cases, we're having an issue, I'll make, I'll make sure it's written, it's documented.
I think it.
We have very many complaints from our schools of private individuals using the dumpsters and stuff. I hope, I know that I see up on the football field of Duval, I see car after car, day after day, private cars, trucks going into that dumpster.
Well, I think that is a problem here with that.
I mean, we've looked at things by which we could lock those dumpsters somehow. I can suggest an easy way of finding out who's doing it, very easily. A game camera. Put a game camera up. Costs you about sixty dollars for a game camera, move it around.
So, you're not going to know who's got one there again and how, huh?
Oh, you can hide those things or camouflage.
I mean, there might be, sometimes I can do it, get away with it, but sometimes I can get caught. Is that what you're saying?
Let me bring a camera.
That's what I mean, are you going to? Are you going to put one at every location or is it going to be?
You can move the camera around.
Well, that's what I mean, that's why, I'm kind of gambling there.
For sixty, for sixty dollars a camera, all you need is what, nine K Ds?
So, if we want everywhere? I didn't know where the payment was.
Five hundred and sixty dollars, you can solve your problem real quick.
We'd have to have board approval, we'll put it.
Probably something in the law, you have to tell the whole, tell the public that you're going to do that.
No, you're monitoring for deer around the.
Just so happens you get.
Just have the kids.
And we've got it, we've already got a monitor on the history here. I'm like to say. All right, anything else, Jerry?
I don't have any.
Okay, anyone else have anything? Okay, well, if not, then we're going to adjourn until January the third, two thousand seventeen, six P M, county office. Motion? Greg, State of the Area?